...of America, in the Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting is called to order. The floor will enter the floor.
Mayor Reidenhour?
Here.
Earl?
Here.
Ewing?
Here.
Harden?
Here.
Knox?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Zimmerman?
Here.
Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved.
I have one question.
Okay.
Um, here under the village administrator, it says that the ODNR grant was in the amount of two hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. Is that right? Wasn't it fifty-five?
Well, there was two, oh.
Yeah, one was for seventy thousand.
Yeah.
With ten thousand match. But I thought the other one was fifty-five, not two.
There was a fifty-five.
And fifty-five.
Fifty-five. I don't know the change. I can go back and get it if it's fifty-five.
I just didn't think it was that much. Maybe it is.
No, it's not.
I just wanted to question.
That would be a windfall.
I know. That would be.
Fifty-five, two thirty-five then.
That would be nice.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, I thought it was.
Maybe if I print, that way you'll have.
That would be nice. We could use it.
That one should be. I think it'd drive.
I could've misjudged it, but.
Where would you put that?
Right.
No, I think it is, I think it's fifty-five, two thirty-five. Yeah, I think there's like two there.
That's why I had down. Fifty-five, two thirty-five.
Yeah. Yeah, you just add two hundred thousand.
Nice try, Joe.
Hey, I just really want the part three back here. That's a pretty Christmas present.
Otherwise, everything's good? Okay. Okay, footballs report.
One million, five hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents in all funds, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-two cents in the general fund.
And additions?
There were additions today. This is our last payroll in year. You should all have coffee of the additions.
Bill is read, resolution sixteen dash twelve dash one. We adopted our motion by.
Earl?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Fifty-five, two thirty-five.
We hatch.
Okay. Go to the committee reports.
I have a question. Did I see the guys putting up some new street signs the other day or? I actually had a guy ask me about progress on replacing all the stop signs. We had that big go around here a year or two ago. And you took it out of our hands, you know, admitted was working on that. What's the deal with it? Did you just?
What, all the signs?
Yeah, stop signs.
Stop signs? Didn't we put up all the west?
All the high reflective, all the high reflective stop signs are up for the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, so all of them are up that council approved?
Correct.
And they're all reflective?
Correct.
I think there was an initial group who was in agreement to go and then you all were going to revisit it. There was any more needed, but those were done. Yeah, we come up with a bunch more and then they, the mayor said that night he was going to take it over or something. I don't remember the exact wording on that, but we just kind of. I know we put up what was agreed and what we put up. I know there's still some that people would like to see up, you know. I think right behind the firehouse that there's no stop sign, I think. There were several around. Nathan could probably tell you better than me. And I never did see the private drive sign put back up that was ordered for up at my brother's place up there. Is that?
I thought we'd put in a dead end sign.
I don't think that we would be responsible for a private drive sign. But that'd be.
I believe we had a dead end sign. I remember what you're talking about.
I don't remember the proper wording on the sign, but I know there were the signs.
I think there were signs ordered. I'll have to double check on that. I think there were signs ordered that said dead end street or something along those. It wasn't going to be put on the end. It was going to be put up West Mulberry Street to caution people for that there was.
You would probably put it.
It would be before the last alley.
Just beyond the street that goes behind the old fence building, wouldn't it?
The alley.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's what was said.
Right.
There was a pole or something there, I think.
Right, there was a, there was a telephone pole, like power pole, something there that we could place that sign on. But we do have that sign if, I think that was ordered.
Well, most communities that I go through, it normally is at the head of the street or like that situation where you have an alley, but it usually says no outlet.
Right, right. That may have been the sign we ordered. I have to go back and look at the records, but, but yeah, we, I believe we did order that. I'm not sure. I'll have to check, double check it out. I'll make it down to check.
This being the time of year that people get stuck in his yard, he doesn't hesitate to rip somebody on council that he's comfortable chewing out, if you know what I mean. Which would be me. So, check on that sign after the first year.
You know, and just because the signs there.
Later in the year.
Doesn't mean it's going to prevent people from going back there.
There was one at one time.
Right, no, you're right. And it was taken down because it didn't meet the high reflective standards.
Was that our sign?
I don't know if it was or not, but I know it was removed.
It's older than us, Mike. He would know who bought it, you know. Guess we could put some glitter on it.
But typically, it would have been, or shouldn't have been the village.
If it was, if it's on private property, it's the property owner's responsibility to put up the, you know, a gate, if they want a gate or, you know, any type of signage, anything like that on their property. But, you know, certainly on, on dead end streets, you know, it's realistic that the village would put a no outlet sign on a dead end street, you know, whether it be Guthrie Street, whether it be, and I think there might be a, it may say dead end on Guthrie. I don't, I don't remember.
I think it says no parking.
But it would be him to have one there too. It says private drive from that. Right, but I'm just, he was told that it was going to get put back up and it has and he's just curious.
Sure, sure. We'll check on it and get that taken care of.
I think we need one at the end of my driveway too, because people come up that alley and they think my driveway is the alley going out to the street. And some of them go through there at a pretty good rate. There used to be a sign at the end of the alley.
Sign company's going to love us.
Which, which side? The Mulberry side? Cause yours isn't looped, right? I mean, like you.
I, I can go out my driveway and go out the alley, but then people come up that alley and out my driveway, thinking that that's a continuation of the.
So you're saying coming off of Mulberry Street, that's an alley right there and there needs to be a sign that says.
Yeah, because the alley actually goes to the west, but.
All right, all right, I got you.
Yeah. But we don't want them down in there. I mean, that wouldn't be good. Well, I know we're going to be spending quite a sum of money on signs here in the next, when's that have to?
We already have, we already have. The new street signs are coming up, are being put up right now. I think that's what they're alluding to. We just spent nine hundred dollars on brackets because the, the new street signs had to be larger. Any speed limits over twenty-five miles an hour, they had to be larger. So consequently, the connectors had to be larger to hold the larger signs. You'll see some of them on Northwest Westminster Street have already been put up. Some of the shorter name signs are still bigger signs and they can use the smaller brackets because they're not as long. As you can imagine, Westminster Street or Northwest Westminster Street is a really long sign, so there's a five inch connector as opposed to a, or a seven inch connector instead of a five inch, something like that. So they're in the process of putting those up right now. They've got, I think, most of the main streets done, but the signs have to have a capital letter followed by a lowercase lettering in order to meet the federal standards. The federal government did a multi, probably billion dollar study to determine how much easier it was to read all capital letters versus capital and lowercase letters. And that's what they came up with. So somewhere a special interest group that is in charge of making signs said, hey, everybody has capital letter signs, so let's go to these upper and lowercase. So we have to order all brand new, high reflective and, and change all the lettering. You'll, you'll notice the new signs have a white stripe around the edge. That's to add the reflectivity too. So when you're driving twenty-five or thirty-five miles an hour, you can read the signs easier. So.
Could lower all our speed limits to twenty and?
Good luck getting ODOT to cooperate with that.
Well, it's nice for us to know that as council members, because I don't know about the rest of the members here, but I get asked these questions all the time. What's the deal with the new signs?
Well, we did mention at previous council meetings that this new sign, I mean, for the last two or three years, we talked about that. But yeah, it's, it was, I want to say it was around thirty-five hundred dollars maybe for the new signs.
It was less than, I think it was.
Well, I think we added the parts.
Well, yeah, with the brackets.
The brackets and everything, we're probably talking about thirty-five hundred. And that's until the government decides they're going to change it again, do another study that says all capital letters or all lowercase letters or maybe even shorting it, shortening it to where there's emojis on it too. I mean, I don't know. Put pictures on there and, and, you know, they're going to make us draw a map on each sign. I don't know.
So you say we should buy some stock in some signs?
Maybe, maybe. We're going to have a big sign up at the stoplight that says you are here with a star on it. Whatever the government wants to do, they're going to tell us.
GPS coordinates.
So that's, that's where we're at right now with that. But they are being put up right now.
Any other committee reports?
I don't know if this is my committee or not, but there's a stop or a street sign, street light, yeah, light, street light out at, there at Maple and 67. And it makes it really dark. And out here at the church, Baptist church, where the entrance, there, there is a security light and it, the thing must, it's got power going to it because it goes to the sign and the light. And the light's not working and then there's other security lights down that same drive where you just go to the back of the yard. There's two more lights that are out.
Are those ours? You saying it's Baptist church?
Yeah, and they're security lights.
Are they ours? Sometimes they're private, sometimes they're ours, and then sometimes they're ours and they rent them and I thought maybe, you know.
I haven't talked to a lot of you before.
Oh, okay, I thought.
I think they do pay for two, maybe three.
We'll, we'll check, but we just have to determine.
There's been three out and they've been out and it's so dark whenever you're trying to turn in a.
We'll, we'll check out the account at the church and see what's theirs, what's ours. See, sometimes people will, will rent them and we maintain them. You know what?
Yeah, yeah, I have, I have one like that. I think they pay.
So, okay.
That's the best money I spend all month is that. I have always felt that way, that, that security light, you know, because I mean, it brightens things up out there at my house and.
Okay, yeah, we will, we'll all talk and we'll try to look at that. Try to move this meeting along.
Police report?
I really didn't intend to speak as much as I have already. I don't really have a report. I'll have my end of year report next month that we're scheduled to order to give every year. So I have all the statistics from the year end and everything for the next, next meeting. That's all I have.
Administrator?
I don't have anything. I have a question for you. Last month you said you didn't have anything to report and the next day I've seen the power trucks down there working for like a week. What's, what's going on? Where right now? In the back of the park here and all over them. You mean the subcontractors? Not ours? Yeah, not ours. Oh, TSC is running fiber optic in areas. That's what it was. Yeah, TSC. They have a fiber optic hub that they were hooking up between, behind the fire station. I think it goes down to the Methodist Church and then it comes. I remember talking about that in here. I just didn't, I couldn't see on the side of the truck. It was. Yeah, and you wouldn't have recognized it as TSC because they, they were contractors. Yeah, I just wondered. So they were in here running fiber optic. And I don't know what the status is or where it's at because we haven't talked. They just told me they were in doing that. People were curious.
Okay, mayor's report. Two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six dollars deposited in the general fund for mayor's report over the month of November. Another thing I have on mayor's report is to renew the contract with our solicitor.
It's the same as last year. Rate hasn't changed, nothing else. All stays the same. Appreciate the opportunity to work with the village. Hopefully we've been doing a good job for you.
Yep.
If there's something we're not doing, let us know.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we hire Fitzgerald, Reese, and Van Dining Company as solicitor for the village of Waynesville.
Earl?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, Clark, thank you, Dex. Okay, let's go to old business, the banner we have suspended.
This is the banner that school have, put on their half the poles.
I like that.
This is the banner that we picked for our half the poles.
I like the graphics. The lettering needs to be a whole bunch of.
That's a nice thing. If we could get them, make this lettering bigger.
Even if you have to swoop it or do whatever to get it all on there, because from very far away, you won't see that.
Originally, we wanted just.
Other than that, I think it'd be great.
We just wanted blue and white and white lettering, but when they sent this, this, they had three samples. Two of them was like this here and this is one that we decided to go with. We thought it was pretty neat.
Yeah, I like that graphic.
What's your sign look like? Got those rings on the other side.
I think it's nice.
So, does everybody agree that they like it, other than the lettering needs to be?
Yeah.
They need to be bigger?
Yeah.
Whatever you can do there?
It's okay.
To do that, I'm good with it.
Yeah, and then the two smaller and then white look bigger, yeah.
This is our sample one, so he asked if we want to hang that for a little while, but we can always go back and have him do the font.
We told him, you know, after they brought him, we said we could put one up to school.
Right, they're not going to reprint another sample is what I'm saying. That's our sample to hang and for everyone to see, but we can ask for the font to be changed.
Well, they're more than likely running it off on computer. Should they would send us a, just for the computer or?
Yeah, yes, they definitely will do that. And then I'll put it out.
Things you do.
Yeah, I can print that out for them.
Is your question?
I could, do they? I think it's pretty neat.
It's good.
Is it okay to go ahead and?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it is. And it's good to have the flag in it. Not enough, not enough people anymore respect the flag.
Okay. Electric rate increases. I haven't had any conversation from anybody over, over this. I don't know if any of you have or not. I think everybody pretty much realizes, you know, it is what it is, but I do know that they would like to see it all just one plain straight bill. This is what it is. PCA like to say, it just confused people and they look at their bill and say, oh, it's only this much, but then when you add that, oh my gosh, now it's, you know, so if it'll just be what it'll be, and if that's the numbers that we figured have come out.
But the PCA will still be there?
Yeah.
And it may be a long time for you to see it, but it got to half and I think that's.
Nobody said a word when it was a few dollars. But boy, when it got up, some people, I mean, it was pretty high.
So the PCA will still be on the bill, but there won't be a charge at this time. Right. It's bringing everything back to zero.
It should come back to zero.
Yeah.
And if, if not, and it could even, it could even go credit, but.
It could.
This economy.
That'd be nice.
You know, I, like I say, I haven't had anybody have any conversation that this is a bad thing to do because like I say, the PCA was really an aggravation. Trying to calculate their bill and all that, you know, for the next month, try to guess how much they're going to use, but they couldn't do it. But that'll bring it right back to, you know, if you use so many kilowatts at, at certain price, they'll, they'll know what their bill's going to be before we ever read it.
I've always felt I've been overcharged a few times. I just can't imagine we're all electorates.
It was awesome through the back door.
Well, there was a couple of times we were a little short in the park, so we hooked on your outside outlet. We didn't think you'd mind. I know I had a new refrigerator, a new freezer, took it from twenty-four hundred and some kilowatts down to six hundred and sixty, so.
It's amazing.
I didn't figure out a way to cheat. I just bought new equipment.
It's amazing what the new technology on, on appliances and stuff will save you money.
Yeah.
It's just that initial outlay, you think, oh my gosh, how, how am I going to do this? It will favor it.
Yeah, and every time you walk by, you still hear it running. Just don't cost as much to run, I guess. They said it will run more than what you're used to and I thought it ran around the clock before.
I'll make a motion to suspend the three readings and declare an emergency.
Miller?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash eleven dash one, an ordinance establishing rate increases for the village of Waynesville.
Miller?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Okay, any other old business? Go to new business. Okay, that's for the magistrate.
Right.
This is, this is for the magistrate that we voted on last month. We came up with a little snafu. If you don't, if you are a member of.
High municipal league.
High municipal league, the cost to take their training course that I took, probably triples. And in that event, magistrate that we're looking at, it would cost him more to take class than he made. He is a magistrate. So the solution to the problem is since the village is a member of municipal league is to put him to the class under our membership.
Is there a cost in that or?
What was it? I think two hundred dollars.
I was going to say.
It's right in that area. Around two hundred dollars, I think is what it was.
I guess anybody in the law business would figure out a way for us to pay for their education.
If that's the case, let me pass on the student loans.
A man your age ought to have your student loans paid off.
I was counting on Clinton to take care of all of this.
That's not bad though, because it's, it's a day, isn't it?
Yeah, it's an eight hour class.
That's not bad.
And then it's only a repressure of four hours after this happened. I only take four hour this year because I've only taken it five. And that was only what, ninety? But again, to be able to conduct business as we need to, we have to have magistrate and it's a good insurance policy to have.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules of three readings and to declare an emergency.
Earl?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance sixteen dash twelve dash one, an ordinance to amend ordinance sixteen dash eleven dash two.
Earl?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Ewing?
Yes.
Harden?
Yes.
Knox?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Okay. The next one is the county commercial building inspection. Aldays County is wanting to enter into a contract with Miami?
Miami County.
Miami County. Miami County is certified by the state to do commercial inspections on building inspections, okay? So it's new construction and anything to do with commercial building. I talked to Masoner Fencer and it is all kind of driven from contractors. Going through the state, having a lot of red tape to get through, to get the permits that are needed, so on and so forth. But with going through Miami County, it speeds up the process immensely. And that's basically what it is.
So they've...
And every community within the county of Aldays has signed on to do this, but us so far. At first, Ben and I talked about it and was a little bit concerned over some of the events that have happened. Not that people don't want to follow the rules, but, and I explained this to Masoner, it's not that, no, but, you know, we want to follow the rules, but we need help, not hindered in trying to perform. Okay, for example, the funeral home, they're at a standstill because of the permitting process and so on. And I don't know how soon that'll resume. And in some cases, it could be a decision they would have, not only them, but anybody would have to make. Okay, I've got enough money to build a building and do something, but I don't have enough money to pay for the architect and all the engineering fees and all of that. So all this, you know, gets real confusing, it gets really costly. But if we have somebody that we can work with, that, you know, if somebody proposes something, somebody we can talk to, it sure makes it a whole lot easier to get something done.
I went to a meeting about two years ago when this was first proposed.